Good evening, it's seven o'clock. We have a forum called Planning Board Meeting to Order. First up for general information is James Channing.
Good evening.
Evening.
James Channing, Councilman for Pride. I'm here, we were here last on October 17th, I believe, with some site revisions. At that point, subsequent to that Tesla came in. Someone's saying Tesla presented some additional information to you for your consideration. And based upon that, I'm just here to address any other concerns or questions before we present the full set of plans. Just for clarification purposes, my understanding that based on the tentative approval of Tesla, there's a request or they need to add additional five parking spaces, which would be behind the loading zone and the unloading zone?
Yes.
To the northwest side.
I can show you.
And then, subsequent to that, I think there was a matter of interpretation or some need for clarification as to the signs. There are two parts of the signs, one being, you know, the building inspector applying the signs permit, one is the interpretation as to the ground sign, and then whether or not the wall signs. If the building was to be treated as a multi-tenant or single-tenant, and with respect to the ground sign, whether it was to be considered as a 64 square foot plus the 16 gas, or is it 64 square foot maximum?
If it's the ground sign, you're allowed 64 square feet, and where the bylaws written, plus 16 for the gas pot, whether one of those things are correct.
I believe that was conveyed to the building inspector, so I think that's been resolved, and now being able to do that. And then, in terms of, from my understanding, in terms of the interpretation of zoning, it's just a single tenant, the way your bylaw is written.
That's correct.
And so that obviously will restrict you to do the signed plans, and then we'll present that as approved to you back in your October 17th plans.
Okay.
If you have any other questions or concerns or something.
I got a question on that.
Absolutely.
The day we approved the change of the sign and other things, then whoever it is, you remember they came back with a different plan?
Right.
Showing, I think, four signs on a building, and the one I had was the one we approved that had three signs. And the date and everything were the same.
And the signs were different sizes.
Right. How did that happen?
Hamilton Romalsky, who's our internal design, to explain that to you, because he's the one that has knowledge.
Are you guys making plans as you go along to your favor, or what?
No, no, it was actually my mistake when we was working on plans and developing the last set to be submitted for the permit. We typically have wall signs that grab the typical package.
I thought you guys were pulling some kind of sharp one.
No, no. In fact, if you saw the plan, we actually were dated differently, we just didn't revise the same.
Same date.
Oh, dates were dated the same day.
Right, right, that was my mistake. I didn't revise the dated revision date. But just so you know, we were trying to pull something on you, they're all date stamped, and the date stamp to show that there was a change in the date when they were completed. This is the one you approved, this is the one that was submitted for permit, this is why you saw a change between these two. The dates are, or that's just my mistake, this is what I should have, but we had dates stamped in all our drawings, and you see that this one says November 3rd, this one says October 16th, which is the one on October 17th that you approved.
Yeah, these are dates we go by.
Right, right, no, not again, that was my mistake. That was my mistake in the introduction, incorporating the design inside in-house.
So, which one is correct?
The one that you approved, we have no intent on changing what you previously approved.
So this is the correct one?
Yeah, correct.
So your question was, you want engraved with 64 square feet on a building of signs total?
So the row sign elevation, when we applied for the ground sign, we calculated as being the 64 plus...
Plus, not to exceed 16.
Correct. Plus the 16, which is total 80, and I believe the building inspector may have not interpreted the same way we did, but I believe he may have inquired a view, and it was clarified now that that, what was previously approved, what we're seeking, is what we applied for.
Okay.
But the buildings, they wanted more?
That one shows more, but this one makes bylaw. That one does not.
Yeah, that was a matter of interpretation as to whether they're tenants or second, no, what we're seeking is what complies with the bylaw, what you previously approved. Just know. So that being said, I'm not sure if you want us to wait for the amended language, put that in the cover sheet, and give you the final set? Or what your preference is in terms of getting the final final set, so that we can work through all the departments, but ultimately, in some time, hopefully in the near future, get the certificate compliance from the peer review, and come back and have that.
I've got a question for you, the guy from Tesla couldn't answer. How many of Tesla's are registered in Hampshire County?
I don't know, but I'd be more than happy to look into it.
I'd love to find out.
Yeah.
We've got 12 charging stations there, so if there's more than 12 Teslas, I'll take you to dinner.
I haven't seen one myself.
So, after the last time you were in, we were given a, the engineers followed up with an update listing all of the correct dates for all of the plans, but now those have changed again, I think. So, if we could just get that again. We had voted to approve an updated set of plans, and we wanted to be sure we had the right dates, so if you could just get me, I need, just email me the correct dates, because I've held off doing the amendment because it's been a moving target.
I understand, hopefully we get a final set and move them in. So I'll have John Furman from VHB email that for final set.
Right.
And then we'll take it to the next question. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byler?
Two things. First thing is the garage door for the mannequin's building. This is the one that we would like to choose from Raynor.
This is one door?
Yeah.
Any different designing on it?
Yes, it's panelized door.
Those are windows, probably.
Yeah, so we decided to go with windows. It's a little bit more decorative than, has a little bit more detail to it than just a plain door.
So this is the outline of, this, the actual door will have this?
Yes.
Many different looking panels and windows in it?
Yes.
Oh, so that's more all windows?
Yes.
And lots of panels?
Correct. We're debating, still debating, if we want to go dark gray or white, so most likely we'll probably go white.
Most definitely, more decorative than standard.
Yes.
Did you mention who was going to put this in? Did you mention the door company?
Most likely we'll probably go with, I think they're good shoes to go with Raynor, and they'll probably do it, I think they're East Hampton.
Yeah, we've got a pretty good one in Halle, you might want to check out, too.
That's right.
Hopefully.
I have no skill. I think it's Divine Overhead Doors, that's actually the name of the building.
Most likely it'll be my house.
Got you.
Anyway.
I'm kidding.
What does the door look like? Good, reasonable?
Yeah, it looks good.
All right, the other item, we have to move a transformer on the property itself. I believe the transformer itself is over 30 years, close to 40 years old. Eversource has asked us to relocate it, essentially closer to a paved access point for them to get to. We went through the conservation committee, they took a look at it, they're okay with that.
Where is it, is this where you want to move it to, or where it is where it is?
We want to move it to up, so closer to...
Oh, okay, so it's kind of local here, further into the property.
Correct.
So that's right close to the parking lot?
It's closer, correct.
You just got to put some guideposts around it, make sure it doesn't get covered, that's all.
Yeah, boulearts and...
Yeah.
Correct. The other item in there, if you notice, is we want to keep the trees, the original trees that have always been on the property, instead of the original design, they wanted to cut them down and replant new ones. We'd like to keep the ones that have been there since we bought the property, they're large and mature, and they produce enough coverage, so it changes the islands a little bit, and the asphalt area, so there's actually less asphalt than there was before, but still Eagle Mount parking, because we removed the door from the side and put it in the front.
The front sheets work, is the revision, the back sheet is working?
Yeah, originally it was.
Correct.
And those trees, they're all mature trees?
Correct, I think they've been there since it's been built.
Yeah, they didn't put in one when Billy Bryon was installed, like, with how many eons they're gone.
Yeah, we like them, we don't want to cut them down, they produce, you know, they have a lot of coverage on it, they're mature, they look good, so we maintain them.
They're healthy trees?
What was that?
They're healthy.
Yes, to us they look healthy. There might be one that we have to take a look at next year, but right now it still looks good to us, but my tree guy said you might want to take a look at it next year, but that's one out of, I think they were originally having us remove five.
I don't have a problem with that. The one with the parking is the same, maybe it's the same.
Well, I don't want to see him cut the trees down and not find them.
Well, no, I agree, if you cut a tree down, just replace it with another tree, that's all next year.
Okay. We did have to cut down a birch, it was a less than 12 inches, 8 inch birch that was there that we cut down this. But if there's another bush or another tree that you would like us to replant in its place, we could do that.
Well, it's native.
Okay.
Just the native trees, we want to, we'd like to see native trees replaced, not something like, you know, Japanese, or something like that, you know, not, not the those are natural tree, but we'd like to keep them, native trees.
Okay. But then, as time passes, one gets diseased or dies, and they cut it down, they need to understand that.
Okay.
I don't have no problem with that.
What else are we thinking?
Bill's writing it up.
You want to make a motion for that?
Yeah, it's an amendment, I agree. So I'll make a motion to amend your site plan approval on the basis that the changes are minor, don't require reopening the public hearing. We're going to revise the loading door for the attached, loading door, and relocate, because it was on the back. Relocate a transformer, and change the planting plan to retain existing trees and replace as needed.
And the door is going to be...
I'm going to attach this.
Okay, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be an attachment.
That's the motion?
Second.
Motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, you have a motion? Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Greg Switzer. Switzer?
Close enough. I represent Dr. Ball, I'm the general contractor. We're seeking site plan approval to convert Stan's fruit stand at 200 Russell Street to a dental office, 4,800 square foot, single tenant space. We have all the applications and plans here. And we're going to concurrently make application for the highway department, state DOT, because it's a state road, per curd government, and historical permission approval also, because it's in...
G. Russell.
Because it's in the, whatever district requires historic permission approval. We'd send the facts to them, which I guess initiates the application. The lot's pretty flat, actually there's no trees or vegetation.
Are you going to take the building down?
Yeah, we're going to take the building down.
Put it out of the place?
Exactly. Yeah, we're going to clear the site completely.
So, site plan approval, business use, and aquifer?
Yes, aquifer, as well as...
What's the building going to look like?
The architectural's are in there, too.
Are we sure that the existing building is a historical invention?
It's a historical.
Yeah, it's a historical, right.
There's a floor plan and an ovation. Then we're given, again, we're going to move it for the historical permission, and eventually approve it. Again, it's just a single story.
That's slightly a better tourist perspective.
Trying to keep that look, but we decided to do it as a whole. And again, it's a single tenant.
How long is the building?
It's 4,800 square feet, I'm thinking it's somewhere around 100 by 48, maybe, there's a, the floor plan, it's a 34 right here.
You're going to put a break in the roof?
You're going to put a break in the roof somewhere?
89, well...
Other than the gables that are shown?
Yeah, it's going to be...
Yeah, there's gables.
The top, this is, this is...
Okay, the ridge has to be broken?
Yes.
Put a couloir on it.
Couloir, or something like that in there?
Yeah, we'll be happy to run that before, actually I'll have them redraw with, just a small couloir.
Couloir in relatively...
Just to break the ridge line.
Yeah, in some kind of relative scale, size of the building, and also, whatever, you know, something like that. And when you come to the planning board meeting, please, and enter the conservation committee, the historical commission, you'll need, you should have a color render, what color are you going to have?
Yeah, they're going to get that.
Okay. We don't need it now.
No, no. I didn't realize that the ridge had to be broken.
Yeah, anything over 75 feet.
Okay. And it shows, I think it shows four wall packs on the lights, on the building, downlight only, and two pole lights on the back, again, downlight only, so...
Like shoebox style lights?
Yes. And we'll have the engineer and the architect do the actual, the presentation next morning.
So they're going to have parking lots left?
Yeah, there's a...
Okay, when you do the parking lot...
There's the parking. It's all behind the building, that's for showing.
Okay. Do a photo metric as far as light leaving the property, what it's going to look like? If you don't have any...
Yeah, we'll give you cut sheets on the lighting, and show the lighting leaving the property.
Okay.
It's a pretty simple project.
Because this residence is here and here, we want to make sure that we're not spilling over into their property.
Yeah, I understand completely, we're going to, there's a planning plan, too, I think we're going to add maple trees.
Oh, yeah, I'll log you back, okay.
This is, no, speaker 0.67, it's a pretty big lot. And it's pretty flat, and it was pretty expensive.
Is this about where the existing building is?
No, actually the existing building is much closer to the street.
Oh, really?
So I'll have them also supply cut sheets for the lighting, and show the roof, the ridge broken.
Right. And color.
Well, yeah, for this dark commission, you don't care about the color itself.
We do, we do well, so we, because we interpret right after the decision.
Planning board ultimately has, makes a call, the commission is advised.
I got you.
If we want to make sure that what you, just make sure, whatever colors you make it, that's what we want to see built.
Oh, yeah.
Because we'll hold you to that color scheme, and to that design.
Yeah. Well, we're also peer review, we're sending it out tomorrow to Berkshire Design, maybe, they were on your list?
Yes.
For engineering peer review.
You going to do your sign at a certain time?
Yeah, he actually, I think we're going to do, I think we're going to do a separate permit for the sign, because he drew it way too small.
64 square foot, you mean?
Yeah, I think he showed like one quarter of what's allowed.
He's got a 24 square foot, so it doesn't have to be 64, that's the max. No, this is, he's got, he's got a 24 square foot.
Yeah, we're going to up that, I mean, 24 isn't reasonable. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to come close to 10, maybe we'll pick it to. Okay, so we got Mass DOT, historical commission, peer review going on, we'll change it to show the colors, and we'll change it to show a ridge line break, and we'll also give you the down lighting specs, to make sure the light doesn't leave the front room.
Exterior lighting on the side, it can't be internal.
Oh, okay, all right. And that's a special permit, a separate permit anyway for the sign, right?
Wait a minute.
And I'm assuming we'll be notified, it's going to be the first Tuesday.
You will know tonight when you leave, when you're going to be... Are you going to destroy the door 40,000 square feet?
I don't think so, no.
So you don't need, you don't need the erosion?
No. But there, you know, he did put an erosion plan, just a basic one.
That's, that's why, well, most days you don't need them, you don't need the permit, special permit for that, you just need the aquifer, the site plan.
Yes, yes, that's my understanding.
January 2nd, or 16th?
16th I'll be here.
Hmm?
16th I'll be here.
You will be here for the 2nd? Okay.
You will not be here for the 2nd?
No.
Okay. Then you have to go to the 16th, because I'm not participating in the decision.
Would you mark from that one?
These, January 16th. Let's see, this is called Connecticut River Valley Dentists. So I see the building is...
It's 4,800 square feet.
That's 4,600.
4,000, that's the accurate number.
200 Russell Street?
Yep.
This application, a set of plans, and you're checked. These are, let me, this is...
We just picked these up, the changes are there.
How many sets of plans do you have?
Two packets of site plan, so there's more than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Make sure we got three. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine, okay, we don't need nine. We can take.
We need seven, they call me.
Let me see the top. One of these, one of these. Check, and the application, so file that with the town clerk. And we'll take care of it. Butters on later.
You have two copies of those in place?
Yes.
I saw that.
Hold them, master plans. Oh, yeah, right here, I got it, I got it.
I did?
I got the, I got the labels.
Okay. So we'll file this with the clerk?
Take, we can take, we'll send a grain of plants, she can have that.
Thanks a lot.
Do you see anyone?
I'd be pleased to put an accessory apartment on 4 East Street. Yes, I think this is what he asked for the last time, four copies.
Okay.
It wasn't on there, but certainly there's an existing 16 by 24 barn, that's here now.
Okay.
That's where the house is located.
Where is the parking and stuff going to be?
It'll be here in the front, so this is East Street.
Yes.
The house is here, driveway comes up here, the parking will be off on the side right here, piece of what runs along the road. It's already widened as it comes around, so our driveway comes up to the garage, comes around the side, and goes, you know, right straight to the back of the house there.
Is Brian is over, is he here already?
Yes, it is.
Where's the fire going to be, in the barn or in the house?
No, we're taking down the garage, which is attached to the house, and replacing it with the addition right there, for the accessory apartment, so the first floor will be like a, like an office space.
This is what's here today?
Correct.
What's it going to look like when you're done? We need those placed.
Does that also have a fire?
No. Not yet.
That's a couple...
So basically, the garage is here, so we're going to take what's there, we're going to take it down, and so the first floor will be like an office space, that'll be basically underneath. The second floor will be the actual accessory apartment for in-laws or my children, and then we're going to convert this into, this will be a space for our oldest son to have a little bit of a... A rec area, if you will.
There's going to be, the first floor is going to be a what?
Just an office space, like our business, you know, not business, but a working space.
Home office.
Yeah, home offices. My partner works for the university, she's a remote employee, so she works here, is employed by them, so this would be a space for her, for my...
Yes, I understand that.
No, I said, did I, not.
How many square foot is this whole thing?
I forget, it's been a long time since I've thought about that, it's underneath whatever the allowance is, whatever, it's 900 square feet.
We're wondering if we don't want to call it an office space.
Yeah.
Don't call it an office space.
It's work space, work space. So this will be our work space, this will be the accessory apartment, and then this will be a bedroom for our oldest son.
I think it would fall into the category of the no, no visitors, and...
But just to say, to avoid any, any issue, just call it a work space, a working space. Studio, whatever. Okay. Under, nine twenty?
Yes, it is, that's, whatever the number is, I think he was the number on the side where I was.
So this is... Need space, plus it's one bedroom living, a couple kitchens, that's the, it's roughly 32 by 28, yeah, that's under.
So do you think you can get your architect to get us, if you do scale, this is really what we need, but we need multiples of it to...
Sure, yeah, I actually, I can probably, I have them, I just didn't realize the need to bring them, so I apologize. It's used in an email, if that's right, would that be small enough?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does this show the driveway, the back of the building?
Uh, it does, sorry.
This is, actually, this sheet right here, it basically, it'd be perfect if we could reduce it in size.
Okay.
Because those, those are almost the same things here.
I'm pretty sure he did.
PDF, we can just send it, and we'll make it fit.
Okay, all right, yeah, he sent me a copy of it in email, so that if you did need something smaller, he have, I have that.
You have to go to the board of health.
You got that?
I already did that. We had somebody come out, we tested everything, it's in very good working condition, and we'll accommodate what we have now, we just need to expand the reach a little bit.
You don't have an application, right?
No, we did not, we didn't get that far.
Okay, fill that out, and just, here's a pen.
All right, thank you.
And just go over there, fill it out, and give it to us, and we'll schedule it. When you come back with that, we'll take care of all that first.
Thank you.
Oh, here, it'll be back.
Yeah, planning@havliMA.org, but if you go to our page on the Havli site, it's there. Just click on my name, and it will pop up.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I think I made a mistake, I think we are going for erosion, too, because we probably want to disturb the... Gentlemen, I think I made a mistake, I think we are going for erosion too, because we probably want to disturb the record, and that was the engine, it was intent.
Okay.
The footprint's much smaller than I hear, but I'm sure by the time we staff them and everything. And I think that was his intent, yes. You can see, I just picked these up three hours ago, everybody waits until the last minute to complete their plans.
Need new check, there's 375.
Okay.
That's all it's going to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Check for 375. Or another 25. Yeah, no, yeah, so I can sort of.
Mr. Larry. See, you got the AC working.
I didn't notice that. Not to notice that, I.
Dr. Frank.
Hey, is that working?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Get a space one right there. Carousel.
We got him.
Carousel. Exactly. If you make the meeting, I've got to make it.
Okay, so, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you just. Uh, we haven't had a chance to, uh, talk since that workshop. Rule number one is always, don't go to the meeting until you make sure your laptop works and you can show your PowerPoint presentation. Anyway, I always do that, that's, that's a cardinal thing. But, after all that, I'm not, that was really interesting. I learned a lot, uh, from it. There's a lot of good stuff in it. So what are your, what are your suggestions?
I printed some of these off, I'm going to copy.
It's the, uh.
Just one copy.
Just one copy.
That was what they were supposed to hand out?
Yeah. Yeah. That was, you could almost imagine. The, uh. Will the PBPC be doing that affordable housing investigation stuff that?
We are in fact getting training on it in two weeks, or four of us in the office will be taking that.
Okay.
And we'll be, we'll be getting that, the mass housing, and once we are done with that, we will be certified.
Okay. And what, any idea what the fee would be?
That we don't know, but it's not going to be inexpensive, because, uh, this is what we have to do. Slaying out is quite, it's quite expensive, I can sort of see why the price came in so high, uh, for, for them. I'm not sure ours will come to that high, but we will have to work out an hourly rate for that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll have a much better idea on that after we have the.
Okay. To be eternal, that's all.
Yeah. We are, we are.
How's that work, that just works on the price per unit?
Uh, yeah, likely that would be how it would be done, or per unit.
Not on the project, per unit?
Because that's how they're, that's how they administer. So we are only administering the individual units that are, uh, the affordable.
Yeah, so with some, with a project like Barris, there would be, under the original plan, would have about four units, five units, that were to come online at one time, but then, the resale would only come up every three to five years after that, so it makes sense that you would price them per.
Refer, yeah, and then there's an annual report you have to do at the end of the year, to file with the state. There's no fixed cost and variable cost per unit, when they get in the game, you don't have to pay something, and then incremental over that.
Of course, this is our cost.
This is America.
Yeah.
So there is a fixed cost, whether you have one or not, right? No, everything we do is based on an hourly rate for how much it, how much, how much it takes.
So who, who implements the committee? Do we have control over who's going to be on the committee, or is that the select?
Select. It's the chief elected, no, the chief. Chief, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's chief elected.
Yourset Dayton.
Nero Selectman.
I think it's the, uh, one reason I read this, huh? I was under the impression it was going to be, it could be your, uh, town administrator.
Well, we don't, he's, uh, he's not a.
Chief Administrator?
Yeah, that's my point.
Oh, okay, he'll probably be there.
Yeah, he's not an administrator per se, or he's not a town manager.
Right, your bylaw can be set up to require, uh, appoint you from the planning board, appoint you from the housing authority, and appoint you from this group, and appoint you from that group. And you can, you know, nominate somebody, uh, from your board who wants to certain that capacity, but it would be, they would be appointed by the.
Select. And the select would could appoint the town.
But he's the chief, the chief official is automatically, uh, on it in the head.
So we'll be a full-time employee?
Would you need a full-time employee?
Wouldn't we, or?
No, no, no. Full-time, no.
No? Why? The way everything else goes in this stuff?
Well, that's, that's what I'm.
Full-time, no, I think you might be, at some point, some administrator.
Thank you.
That was, that's what I, that was the one major thing that I needed from that workshop.
Right.
Was it, yeah, was it, it's, it's a fair amount of work. It is rather sophisticated.
It's only if the trust grows to a certain size.
Yeah, so.
It's only if you try to make it.
The application, a check for the filing fee, and reduce set of the plans to the town clerk in the next couple of days.
Got you. All right, thank you very much.
Well, Larry. So, I want, I want to make the other thorough comment. We're, we're treading in the waters we have no idea. I think we had certain assumptions we had last time, for example, we thought our local building, housing authority could have control over it, and that would be relatively simple.
Yeah.
However, we didn't check with them, and little did we know, that, that would not be their choice. Although it was our choice. So presently, we have, what is it, 2,200 houses in town, housing units. 285 are affordable, worth 13%, well, 12.97%. Really, the highest in Happy Valley. Now, if we were going to drop to the 10% threshold, that some developer could come in and put as many units as they want in, we'd have to build, right now, we're building 10 to 12 houses per year. We'd have to wait 60 years before we come close to the 10%. Do we really need this housing trust?
You need.
Is, is it a political issue, or is it something that, from a planning point of view, we should do?
I, I think we're talking about two sort of different things here.
Well.
What is the inclusionary zoning provision? And that's the provision that requires that for any project, a certain percentage of units have to be provided as a core. So that's one thing. Then you have a, a choice, and the choice is how do you want that developer to provide those units? If you're having the developer provide those units physically, uh, you don't really need to have a municipal housing trust. All you would need to do is really contact with somebody who's in the administration of the, uh, the turnover and the rental of the, of the units, make sure they're affordable. If you're going to be accepting a little payment provision, you need somebody to accept that money and have the ability to use it. And that's where the municipal housing trust, uh, gets in. Okay, we can't just have the treasurer have an escrow account, it has to be a legal trust.
Yeah, yes.
And you've got to have a committee to.
Yeah, so.
Take care of that.
Yeah, no. And it is the chief detective, uh.
So are we, are we getting into a situation that we cannot extricate ourselves?
You could be. I, I mean, you know, from our first conversation on this, I expressed to you I had reservations. And we have a lot of communities in our region who adopted almost identical inclusionary zoning bylaws, as did you. And that, and some of them do have the in lieu of payment, and they have the same issue with you, which is, their housing authority probably does not have the will or the capacity to administer. There are some, um, bylaws, and this is what I typically recommend, that don't have the in lieu of payment provision. That require that the developer actually physically provide for the units.
I'll tell you, I like that better, because there's too many unanswered questions, and like you said, the build-out is far away, and those what it doesn't add, it makes it further.
Wolf is not at our door, no. And, and I, I don't want to not do something.
Well, we can't, we can't say, well, 60 years is so far, we don't have to worry about it. That is, to me, that is unacceptable. We need to keep the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Why?
Let me explain, because it is, in my opinion, it is absolutely poor planning to say we don't need to worry about it for 60 years. You've been on this board, you've been on this board for 40 years, over 40, 40, about, almost 45 years. I've been on it for 35, okay? Bill's been on it for like 31.
34.
34. However, all I'm saying is, that's not that far in the future. 60 years is not that far away. Okay? And to say we don't need to worry about it, again, my opinion is totally unacceptable. We have to do something, maybe we don't need the housing trust, now that we know the rules, and how difficult they are, like this subdivision that's coming before us is eight lots. They need to provide one unit of affordable.
Now, how would they do that?
That's what we tell them. If somebody comes in and they meet the criteria, this is what you need to do, and this is what is going to cost you.
Right.
They know ahead of time, before we approve, and before they put a lot of money into it, we are not going to, if we decide that, we are not going to accept payment in lieu. We, we revise both the senior housing and the affordable and the inclusionary zoning to represent what we're talking about right here. No payment in lieu, you take care of it, is going to cost you some high percentage. And this is what you're going to do.
I, I didn't mean to ignore it completely, I perhaps didn't make myself clear, but what I'm saying is that we don't have to rush something for this town meeting, because there's a lot of studying and work that we have to do.
But, that's what we're doing, though, if we just put it off, it'll never get done.
But the whole point is, how does that leave Barry Roberts with his project? If he doesn't hire someone to take care of the paperwork for that, and that goes on their inventory, that's a problem. We got that in motion now.
He's, he's going to have to do that.
Right.
And whether it's us or another firm that's out there.
Well, Barry, Barry's off the table right now, because he got a variance to excuse from.
Oh, that's right.
You got a bar, you got a variance.
Let, let, let's not worry about Barry. Yes. Barry is not the issue.
Yeah. He's an illustration.
The issue, he, he has brought forward.
He brought the light.
He brought the problem to our light, so let's not worry about Barry Roberts and that four, four or five units. Let's worry about everything else that will come before us in the next, yeah, 60 years.
He got to win.
I mean, I, I think what you need to do is, you need to clarify, do you want to do in lieu of payment or not?
Yes.
And if you decide that that's something you don't want to bite off, it's not that you can't go back and revisit it at a future date.
That's right.
But if it's something that you don't think you have the capacity to administer now, you could easily just, among your bylaw, just remove that. I'm just curious, at what point do you get involved, if in fact you become involved with managing these types of, uh. At what point in the procedure? Before the applicant is approved to live here? Before he applies for a mortgage? After he gets rejected for, by a mortgage? When do you get involved? I, I would suggest that from the developer's point of view, he approached us and we had, I'm sorry, I had a conversation at the beginning of the project. Right. So we can have stuff in place by the time, by the time it's, it's, it's developing, it's ready to go.
Well, he wants to know the cost, too.
That's right, they, they need to know what the cost is going to be.
With his financing to get it somewhere better.
Who will be dealing with you when someone wants to buy one of these properties? The developer or the person that's applying for the, for the, for the unit? Initially, it will be the developer.
Okay. Okay, now, let's, let's say, rental units, I believe, are a lot easier than purchase units.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So let's leave rental units off the table, just for discussion purposes, right, I'll purchase units, because then we're probably going to see a few of those, so. Let's just say, the develop, development coming before us is on Shattuck Road, there's eight units, so one of those needs to be affordable. So the developer will come in to see you, just example, to see you or the housing trust, the mass housing, whatever that thing, the, this, this, um, housing trust, uh, housing partnership, MHP, and they take care of the initial purchase.
Yeah.
There's a, uh, deed restriction that says it must stay affordable.
Right.
So now.
That will keep it on the inventory.
Keep on the inventory, that's right.
So I, let's just say, you'll use me, I buy the property, I mean, I qualify, I buy this affordable house, I build it, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
10 years down the road, whatever number may be, I want to sell it. How do I do that?
You can sell it, you would, what I would suggest you do is you contact us, so we go over the steps of what you have to do to, to sell it, and sure, and in fact, you're selling it at an affordable price, and to somebody who is qualified.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be the same, uh, process originally by it?
It would be a lot of the same.
It's, well, I would have to pay you a fee to go through, to make sure somebody meets the qualifications.
The seller, the seller.
The seller, the seller, me, okay. And that's going to, so I'm going to sell a house for X number of dollars, and on top of that money that I get.
Yeah.
I am at two, I'm going to say, you say sell it to bill, I'm going to have to pay you a fee on top of that, on the order of the point of cost.
Wouldn't the affordability say, make sure that in fact it stays within the framework of what it was required? Couldn't the affordability, though, in a certain year vary by month? If, if mortgage rates were going up, then what the person could afford would go, would stay the same, but the amortization schedule would go up if, if mortgage rates went up, follow me?
I do, but I'm not sure.
So, so how does that work? I'm not sure that would factor into it, I mean, I think. But that's affordability, that's affordability, yeah. Somebody can afford a mortgage at three and three quarters, but they probably have. Once the sale goes through, and, you know, once you qualify as an affordable unit and you own it, um, we're not going to prevent you from getting raises at your job, so that your income doesn't rise above that limit, and we're not going to make you sell that house at the point that your income does exceed that limit. We're just going to make sure that when you do sell that house, it is sold at an affordable housing rate to somebody who is qualified.
Now, how, how do we ensure that when I go to sell a house, I follow the guidelines, there's a deed restriction to take care of?
Deed restrictions are on there, and Bill is the buyer, Bill's attorney, uh, doing the title search on it, will identify that, and will ensure, or, and will, and will, uh, note about Bill, this is his interest, in fact, you follow through on that, to make sure. So basically, when the sale takes place, it's not an arms-length transaction, it's based on a formula.
Yeah. Are you, I'll, I'll, I'll. We, we understand, we, we're not trying to, I'm trying to get just like a general idea of how we.
That's going to be exactly what's going to happen. Five years, 10 years from now, you're going to forget that there was all these restrictions on it, you're going to go to your local Realtor, they're going to go, oh, lovely house, put a price on it, market it.
Yeah.
And then when I do the title search, to the buyer, will discover this affordability, which will blow that first sale out of the water completely.
And they'll also blow the owner out of the water.
Yeah.
Well, no, they, they will forget the first time they list it, then.
The whole responsibility is it.
The owner.
The owner.
It's the owner's responsibility, but, but the owner's going to forget, after 10 years, you're going to forget all of this.
Well, you want to send a monthly reminder?
Well, it's not whether it's convenient or not, the point is, everybody's going to go through the exercise of trying to sell this house at market rate first time, because everyone's forgotten all of this that we've talked about.
Not our problem.
And then, uh, as the buyer's attorney, I'll do a title search, I'll find there is a problem, I will advise my client that he can't buy this house because of the deed restrictions, and then, Jim, let's go ahead and turn it over.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a minute, you're going to be kidding me? If I buy a house, qualify it's affordable.
You're probably going.
I know what the hell I bought, you didn't buy a wheelbarrow, you bought a house.
But people, people are going to conveniently think that they can get.
They can do what they want, once we order it and the deed is done.
It can't pass by will, I can't, will it to my child if I die, right? I don't know. What the kid.
Now, Larry, Jim was alluding to the, uh, the eight units, I mean, the eight housing units we're going to have on Shattuck Road, and they claim that they're affordable, that one unit that's supposed to be affordable is going to be off premise.
Yeah.
How is that?
Outside of the project?
Yes.
Uh, do you allow that?
Yes.
Okay, then that's not even doing.
Okay, then that's not even doing it.
How, how will they do it?
They will have to own or buy a lot, get ownership of it, and.
Or a house.
Yep, or a house.
Right.
And develop it, and sell it as an affordable housing.
Yeah, they could do that.
Do you allow?
Just like Barry and whatever.
You include your A and Rs?
No.
Oh, good, if they found some town that did, I'm trying to think, how do you do that?
No.
How do you?
Your A and Rs.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you have a five-eight, or a five lot A and R, or eight lot A and R, and you've gotta do one of them as an affordable, procedurally, how do you even think that works?
We're strictly subdivisions.
Good. Yeah, and multifamily, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's clean.
Because, I mean, first of all, A and Rs, A and Rs, I mean, I don't know how you.
It was Southampton did that, and Southampton removed the special permit provision, so it's all by right? Yeah, that's exactly.
That's exactly right.
What, it was by right?
Yeah, uh, they, they have, they have an affordable, an inclusionary bylaw, much like yours, and requires that for every, you know, number of units, it triggers it, you have to provide some affordable use. But, uh, they removed the requirement that it be a special permit process, so that it's by right. And so I'm looking at it, trying to think, well, how do you enforce this, how do you administer this?
I was gonna say, how do you administer that?
So when they're coming in for an A and R, and they include A and Rs, somehow through the A and R process, the playing word has to weigh into the affordable.
Good luck for them.
Lot, yeah.
Anyway, okay, so.
So I'm glad you don't.
I don't want to forget about the housing trust, I think we need to look at that in much closer magnifying glass. But I think we need to revise both of the senior housing by law and the inclusionary zoning by law. Either whether we leave the housing trust in there or not, or we tell people that that's not an option, because you don't have a housing trust, or you can donate.
Yeah, I think you need to take it out.
Take it out.
I, um, yeah, I think we do have to conform, because right now, senior housing and inclusionary are at odds.
Right.
Yes. I think what we just went through, this exercise of discussing how it would work if you didn't have a housing trust illustrates, you know, there are problems both ways, and I absolutely can see problems with the housing trust, it's one more board that needs volunteers to fill it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
That's what I don't.
And if you looked at the, at the workshop, the communities that had the most successful housing trust projects, you know, it's Cambridge, I mean, it's communities like that, that have a really strong in-house capacity to administer, and they have a really strong, uh, pro affordable housing.
You have very proactive in that.
But a housing authority, right?
So. But they don't do the housing.
No, they go through community development usually. Uh, I didn't make one for myself, but give that, give that to Larry. So what I did was, I took this skim this afternoon through affordable housing for, affordable housing trust for individual towns.
Mm-hmm.
And there is not, John, you were talking about, let's see, what the documents look like. Well, basically, there aren't a lot of documents. What it comes down to is that in most of these, there's a note somewhere to the effect that town meeting voted to adopt the provisions of general laws.
Yeah.
And that then became the housing trust.
And their trust bylaws almost all look identical.
Yeah.
And it's almost word for word from what the state.
So.
So you're on a roll here, and you've got to interrupt.
Well, the, I'm looking at, part of it, I'm looking at it from the perspective that Jim started on, about long-range planning here, that, you know, we have an opportunity right now with a board that's fairly.
This is what the state.
Very sophisticated.
Yeah.
That we, we really owe it to the town to fix this one way or the other. Because after us, we don't know, we, we can hope that there will be dedicated people who will, but I'm not seeing that there, we're gonna find people who are willing to do this, sign onto this for twenty or thirty years. So I think what we have, we have this window of opportunity, and that's why, yes, it is a lot of work, but I think we need to work it through, because we understand it right now, and we really owe it to the town to set up something while we can, that will have some longevity here. Uh, I just look at, I look at it from the administrative overhead of tracking compliance. You know, who, who is, who at the town level is going to even tell Jim, as the homeowner, that he should contact County Valley Planning Commission? Uh, you know, we're, I, I see that getting, doing, letting the developer put in the property makes a lot of sense at the outset, but I just see that turning into a snake pit ten to twenty years down the road.
But you're gonna have the same issue if you have a housing trust, and the housing trust is, is, is building these units.
I don't, well, that's what they were saying, the housing trust can do it a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
And we don't need to have the housing trust building the units.
Right.
What, uh, what was mentioned when Barry Roberts was talking about it was that, I think Lennox has a housing trust, and what the housing trust did was, basically, put out a request for proposals, they, they, I think basically identified a piece of property the town wanted to buy.
Yeah.
Then the town bought it, then put out a request for proposal for someone else to run.
Right.
On that site. And the benefit was that they got to choose where the development was gonna be.
Right, but once those units got developed, they had the same administrative responsibility as everybody else.
But the whole.
So you have the same issue, if it's a homeowner, ownership sale, you got the same issue that we were just working on.
What Jim said, I agree, with all the nuts and bolts to both sides, all right? To find out, so we make sure we're doing the right thing. Far is the procedure, when someone comes in, it's just like, for a review, we give them a list of engineers that's acceptable for that. So you would do the same thing for this. If he comes in for a project, here's a list of people, you, you contact, 'cause you're gonna pay him, you're gonna deal with him, but this is what's acceptable.
But I think Bill's point would be, ten years down the line, when the second person comes in, they're not gonna have that background that the first person had. And so they may, you're right, they may have some.
But it's in a deed restriction.
The thing is. That's true.
They can't go nowhere.
Whether it's a housing trust that, I just said a housing trust built, whether they, whether the houses built the units, or they even to a contract to build, ten years down the road, whether I bought the property from John, or from you, or from you, or I bought it from Joe that came to the housing trust to put up the money, I still own that property. The housing trust isn't gonna be keeping track of this.
Right.
It's going to be me and my deed restriction, and like Bill said, it is going to be a snake pit. I see the snake pit there, whether the housing trust paid for it roundabout, or John, the developer, paid for directly.
But all restrictions, whether it's a conservation restriction, or a historic preservation restriction, or affordable housing restriction, all have a third party who's sort of responsible for making sure that the other two parties play by the rules. Yeah. And we'll have to work that one, work that one through.
The, now, would the tax titles have anything about them? The tax, the assessor's office have anything about affordable?
Isn't that like a lien of something on the property? That would be registered with that?
The assessors are gonna assess it for what it's valued at, and the value's gonna be based on POPs, and there's some value, and I'm assuming the value, the fact that it has a restriction on it would factor into the value of the property.
The assessor's office might, because it's going to be deed restrictive, the assessor's office cannot, in other words, if I paid, just to know, I paid a hundred thousand for the house, but it's worth three, if anybody but me owned it,
Yeah.
the assessors can't charge you more than a hundred grand of tax property, and that's going to be in the tax
Mm-hmm.
title, and I'll call it the tax office, they're gonna have to know that.
Yeah.
So the town will be tracking that, they have to, just like sixty-one A.
Right, yeah.
How do we know what the assessors are gonna assess that building at?
Well, they can't assess it more than what I paid for it because of, well, I would assume, I mean, this is something.
I mean, if the resale value is at that affordable rate.
Yes.
Then that's what the assessment's gonna be made, and that's what the tax was gonna be factored in.
I don't know.
Who's gonna tell, who's gonna tell the assessor every year what the value is then?
They're the ones to tell.
Yeah.
They assess.
But they don't, they don't value.
The valuation.
They don't value properties that have price appreciation limits to them. This is again a formula, who's gonna give the, select the assessors the formula by which they can determine the value on a yearly basis?
Well, I guess we could ask them, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, the other thing is, there must be some controlling interest, because there's a woman who works in the office for the guy that took over, and she, she works one day a week, uh, and she used to work for Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah.
And her job is just to make sure that the tax credit goes to the developer. And that's another aspect, so somebody must be keeping track of it, because they're not gonna accept the tax credit as.
Yeah, they won't.
They won't, unless it's verified by some organization, and that's what we have to, probably have to get, some organization.
And it might be as simple as the tax office, the assessor's office.
Could be, or it, I think it's like community development cooperation.
Maybe the, maybe the assessor's office is the local gatekeeper for the property, and they're gonna have to obviously do some coordination with somebody, to your point, to find out what the right valuation is. Now, okay, I mean, I don't wanna beat the, we're, we're, this is a good discussion, because we're raising questions and we're, we're finding issues as we just shoot stuff out there, um, that need to be at least looked at. Let me just review so far, make sure we're in agreement. We want to make, we need to make the senior housing and the inclusionary zoning in conjunction with each other, to work together, and I think you put some, some words together on that, if you could just refine it and make sure.
We can do that.
In other words, the senior housing should reference the inclusionary and just amend from this point on, the inclusionary for affordability. We wanted to, do we want to take out the housing trust fund part of the inclusionary zoning by law?
Not until we totally understand that. We don't have to understand.
Well, right now, it's in there.
It's in there.
I know, but.
But you don't have any way to administer.
Yeah, right now, what we have is, we authorize three methods.
Right.
Build me an affordable unit in your development, give me an affordable unit somewhere else, or take my money.
Yes.
Payment in lieu, which is exactly what we do with APR, we've never had a private APR.
Right.
Uh, but the payment in lieu doesn't have anywhere to go, and that's the problem.
It's a whole different, APR has, APR had a pre-existing fund to put money into.
Sure.
So that was, that was much.
And you don't need a housing trust, or a similar entity to do that.
Right, there's already, that was, that was already set up to the state and the conservation, which was, that was an easy one.
Yeah.
So the two of them go together, retain, payment in lieu, you can't have payment in lieu without a trust. If you, if you delete payment in lieu, we don't need to talk about a trust. If we have a trust, we have to keep payment in lieu.
And you have to do the trust.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would get an idea with the offsite, offsite building and the builder doing it, that's what I like.
That's a good way.
And the good news about administering this, once it gets off the ground, is you're not the first community to do this. Uh, there are other communities that have been doing this and doing this for a while, so we will be able to contact them and get answers to all the questions you've raised, because they're all legitimate.
Okay.
But there are many towns that apparently have overcome those, those issues.
So you're, you're going to the workshop in two weeks, you say, so in our next meeting, you can report back to us on what you've learned?
Except I'll be on vacation the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so, so the first meeting, if, if, if you can report back what you've learned.
Yeah.
We would then have time to decide the housing trust stays, or the housing trust wording in the bylaw should go. And come back at that meeting with the revision, we get the housing, because it's an easy thing to eliminate if we had to, but just come back, if you would, at that meeting with the wording to coordinate the inclusionary and senior housing.
And that should give you time to get it on your annual.
That would play a tight game at the county meeting, yes.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay, and, uh, I mean, I like the housing trust, but I can see, it's not that the housing trust scares me or concerns me, I think that could be administered very well. The problem, to the point we've all, that I would say we've all made, is that Bill and John have made a joke, is to get a committee together that will do it the way we think it should be done.
Most communities that have like a housing trust, start out by having a fair housing committee and a real strong advocacy entity or group to promote affordable housing.
Right.
How, how, how much money should have that here?
No.
How much money should be in the trust before you have these types of activism type things going on?
Well, you know, what are we, what are we gonna get from? It depends on what kind of project you do, I mean, at the workshop, uh, one of the small towns does gap financing.
Yeah.
You know, they help provide bridge financing to give you an extra bunk you need to be able to acquire the property, whether it's the closing costs or whatever it is. So it's not necessarily, so they're not necessarily kicking in a hundred percent of the cost.
So then the trust would have a lien on the property?
Yeah, the same sort of thing.
The CPA funding that contribute to that?
Yeah, the ten percent every year that gets designated for, for housing.
Johnny mentioned that perhaps we could renovate the North Hadley Hall with some of this money and get some, somebody to run it.
Get some affordable housing units in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll renovate that, so with Barry Roberts, we're getting, what, four units?
Five, five times seventy-two, which is a little over three fifty.
And we just had a little back and forth with the treasurer's office. The, um, the balance in the housing component of CPA is a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
There's, there's, there's over half a million dollars available for some kind of.
See, Barry called me about that North Hadley Hall, and he was worried about the, the elevator, 'cause he would have to put an elevator.
That's correct.
And at that time, I said, you know, CPA would have funds to help out on a project like that, and then the money that he would have to invest there, he could put into that building.
That's correct.
And he would own the building, whether it be, right, a rental.
Well, except, John, I don't think CPA would fund a private project, but the Affordable Housing Trust could.
CPA.
I thought they could, CPA could do to a private building.
The law is deed restrictive.
Right, and that, that is.
It's a big.
Everyone that I've done has been not proper enough.
Yeah, I'm on the CPA committee, and there is really no legitimate statement as what they can fund or what they cannot fund. You have to check with Stuart Saginaw, and he will have.
Well, we're working now with your CPA plan.
But, but to your point, that, using the housing trust money, it would seem that we could, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee could, as seed money, invest in an elevator for North Hadley Hall.
Yeah.
And then put out a request for proposals for someone to manage rental senior housing in there, in an elevated building, with doing, doing their own renovations to, you know, there are a lot of ways to skin that cap, but I think that that is away, that's the seed money option, that, yeah, there's some, there's a big hurdle here, we can make the hurdle go away in exchange for various other concessions. We'll put the elevator in, you'll put in the apartment walls.
Joe, can you find out, you're not familiar about, what, what?
Well, you have to make.
Can you use that as an example, right there?
Well, you have to make a proposal, then you send that proposal into the Stuart Saginaw in Washington, and he will review it.
I thought, when Edwin, Edwin LaDusco's here, he, he called directly, 'cause I don't, I haven't.
Well, he calls directly, and they will say, well, they wanna know the specifics on it, so, and if you have the specifics available, then they can give an answer.
Well, I mean, couldn't we write out a scenario that would?
Well, you could.
Would, would, you know.
You could, he would.
You could, you almost should make a specific proposal and go before the, the whole committee.
All, the whole CPA committee or the?
Well, the whole CPA committee, because, you know, they'll have them, but they don't have to follow any rules and regulations. They can say, no, we just don't like the idea, and it's a, it's a waste of money, and even if it qualifies, they can turn it down.
Like, a guy like Barry Roberts could go in front of them and do that?
Yeah. But I think a good point was made, I think someone made it here, I think, well, on the CPA committee, we have a lot of money there, and we can't even give money away because sometimes we don't even have a core entity, and.
Now, just as a, to, to this point there, ten percent, minimum ten percent must go towards this renovation. I don't think that any of this says it can't be more than that.
Okay.
Correct.
Is ten percent automatically set aside for housing, ten percent is storage, ten percent open space? The remaining seventy percent?
Your general fund.
Maybe you can be, cut, cut into pieces for the store, recreation, open space, or housing. So the remaining seventy percent.
Let's say the happening, the North Hadley Hall has a very good idea.
But you could, you could conceivably dedicate eighty percent.
Okay.
To housing.
Okay.
Which I believe is what Andrew's doing.
Would they, would they borrow to do a specific project?
You, you could.
CPA.
CPA, because that could be.
You guys are asking some good questions, and there, well, there are no ground rules there. It was whatever Joe Skibbin said, he ran it very aidfully, and that wasn't.
Uh, there's.
Fortunately, we're giving some, consulting with some brilliant knowledge to set some guidelines of what is allowed, what is not allowed.
And you, you definitely can do, you can do an amount equivalent to the annual principal interest, and you can borrow from it, you can borrow ahead of it.
Well, okay. This is good information, there's a lot of good stuff here that has potential that we can utilize North Hadley Hall to our advantage, just for the better of the town, and not just housing for somebody. We can actually make it worth our while for a number of things. It could be affordable housing for seniors. I mean, that's perfect.
When we had our, remember back, we had a meeting in Village there with the people, they overwhelmingly supported to put, they would like to see over fifty-five thousand.
Yeah. That's true of that, yeah, when they, when they, when the ZBA was doing the variance for the studio apartments, senior housing was absolutely what the people in the neighborhood would love.
Yeah.
But that wasn't what was being proposed.
Well, yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust might solve the conundrum of what to do with North Hadley Hall. You already see that potential. A real, it's got a real potential.
That is true.
And it's something you could focus on, you're right, it's not.
No, no, this is true, nothing says that we couldn't put the housing trust in and do one project.
That's a good point.
And then, not happen anymore. Okay?
From that point, you got no, you got no control of that trust committee.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, let me finish, let me finish. We put, we leave affordable trust in, the wording, we do the affordable trust, we do one project, North Hadley Hall, we spend the money, and then we get rid of the affordable trust.
You're not, no, you're not on that trust committee.
No!
Once, once that's established by the selectmen, I'm just telling you to break up.
There's a lot of groundwork and a lot of pieces to pick in the puzzle relative to the North Hadley Hall.
But I think town meeting could still vote.
Town meeting could still vote.
Deestablished.
Could deestablish the trust, and they could vote to de, and we get rid of it out of the zoning by law, but if it's not there, it's not there. What I'm thinking is, we, we might, do we need it to do one project? If we do, maybe we do, maybe we don't.
Yeah.
We need a lot more information on the CPA.
And you need a lot more information on that project, because there's a lot of pieces we're gonna have to fill into place. All the SARS may not align up.
Yeah, I, I personally don't think we need it to do that project from Barry Roberts' point of view.
Yeah, right.
Because if, he has the option already of doing it offsite.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I necessarily, I, I agree with you on that.
What, what, what we need to find out is what are the limits on the CPA?
Right.
For them to help contribute a little bit, maybe towards an elevator.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Because.
Well, I'm not sure that it would be that specific, that you have to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the elevator, or just like a weekend where it's, it is a hundred thousand dollars a project.
It's worth a project.
It's worth a project.
Where's the way that's.
And we did a number of, using CPA, like, a number of affordable, a lot of affordable.
That would be easier.
Yeah.
Right, it's easier to sell.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and again, the way we used it in Westfield was it's a gap financing. They were able to come together, other funding sources, and they were short this much, and so they would come in and ask for this much money to make the project whole. But there, it was, you know, a, a non-profit, not-for-profit that we were, we were working with.
So what I like about the Affordable Housing Trust is that it gives us control. Right now, having the developer put a building in gives us a building wherever the developer chooses to put it. And so now, we have, we have possibility of an affordable unit on Chattock Row. Maybe that's not where we want affordable units. Maybe we want affordable units closer to public transportation.
But the housing trust won't prevent him from coming in and applying due to that project?
Well, I'm not talking, I'm talking about if, if we are just doing a developer provides.
Yeah.
As opposed to payment and Lou.
Yeah.
No housing trust.
Yeah.
We get something where the developer chooses to provide it, wherever the developer bought land, that's where that affordable unit is going to be.
Yes.
Whereas the housing trust get money in from that developer, from this developer, from two more, and pretty soon, you got a million dollars that you can, the town can use where it wants to use it, in conjunction with CPA.
Is it true they're gonna call it half acres?
Right?
Yeah.
You missed a note, definitely.
How do they get a town?
I, I agree with Bill and Adam, and, and I like the idea of the housing trust from the housing trust point of view. The problem that I see is that, that, you know, raised before, is to put the people, the personnel, on that committee to effectively utilize it.
I'm just not sure they have the capacity to administer. That's, that was my take.
That's, that's, you know.
And that's not to say that at some point you won't have it?
Yeah, I mean, you could put a tiny horn in charge of the, of the trust fund, in theory. However, there is so much detail involved in that thing.
Right.
That, I, I, I don't think we'd want that.
Are you kidding me?
Well, I'll, I'll go back and do as the plan is, you had talked about it previously. Come back to the February meeting, and we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, I, I think that's the best one, give you a bunch of information on it.
And again, you know, whatever you do, at the annual town meeting, as you know, zoning is not actually great. It's a blowing thing, it's a bad thing.
You know, it's an evergreen thing.
Yeah.
And, okay.
But a really good topic, huh? I mean, it's really, yeah. It's got a lot of twists to it.
It's an interesting topic.
Yeah.
I don't know what to call it, good yet.
Well. Well, it's an issue. Uh, yeah, it's an issue, uh, and I think in these cases, I think the inclusionary zoning requirement is a worthwhile one, a good one. In large part, because, you know, we talked about this with the master plan, you've got the highest housing rates in the region. And you don't want to necessarily price out a whole demographic.
You know what I like about this whole stuff? In the state of Massachusetts, to build affordable housing, the community no longer can take care of its community. It has to take care of the whole Commonwealth.
Yeah.
People from all over. How the hell does that work?
Well, because.
Let the communities take care of their own, and they just, for some communities, they ruin them like that.
But the problem you have is that most communities aren't doing it, and so everybody's being driven to those communities too.
So the state stepped in.
And they end up with high concentrations in, if you have, of communities.
So the state stepped in and said, don't want housing.
How much, how much does the housing commissioner in Charleston make in a year?
I have no clue.
About four fifty?
I couldn't tell you.
And then he had another state job.
I couldn't tell you now.
I'll be volunteering.
So we'll see the first community in.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, the fact that they can demand a certain percentage of affordability, but, you know, that certainly has to be, what is it? Fifteen percent, twenty-five percent of the whole project, and that's, that's the.
Well, the beauty of it was a game of rental projects, you count them all.
That's right.
So, it's a numbers game.
So, we don't have to conform to that standard, though. In other words, if we do adopt something, uh, given to a developer, like, we got fooled once upon a time by a friendly forty B, and, but, so if the developer comes in, so I'm gonna build four apartment units in North Hadley Hall, but I don't have to go through zoning to put on another forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
They, they can do that? Or, I mean, could they do that under our rules and regulations?
So we would have a request for proposals that would say, give us four affordable units in North Hadley Hall, make it a hundred percent affordable. Because we, we can, we have that leverage, because we're, we have the facility, and we have seed money, and we can ask for them all to be affordable.
That really is a dynamite project for the town.
It also really depends on if it's gonna be rental or all this shit. I have a huge.
I would probably want to be rented.
Well, if it's rental, you've got a, you have the continuing funding source to continually subsidize rents, the administurer has. Because probably, it's not gonna break even.
If, if a private person runs it, it'll be no problem. If the town runs it, there's always gonna be a problem.
There may be something to that.
No, no, but, Johnny, just, I, I mentioned this before, Sunderland tried something like that, but all of a sudden, we'll say North Hadley Hall, he's, look, it's not affordable. Just, just four units. We wanna build fourteen units, and we make a bigger building, and that's what happened in Sunderland.
Who ran it?
And it's not a town rent it, the town rent it.
And that's where affiliate numbers came. Including putting in an elevator to that hall. Whether you have enough, you want us to make the cost effective to a test of putting an elevator.
Justify the cost.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's complicated.
Thank you. All right, thank you. See you in two months.
Have a good Christmas.
Very good.
All right.
Okay.
See you later.
Bring your bigger jacket next, then you go.
I'll have my winter coat next.
There you go, and your, your underwear.
Do you want information?
Oh, do we wanna talk about detached accessory apartments at all?
Yeah, why not? Who, who, who don't wanna talk about it?
We're talking, okay, we're talking about.
I certainly wanna see some change, that the attached part comes detached.
From what?
So it doesn't have to be attached to a building. So somebody does.
Now, would this be, uh, can, can I build a new apartment?
Why not? You might, you build a new, no, not a trailer.
That's the point.
What's, what's.
So, it would have to be.
Okay, so we had a, I had a call from the guy who, we did a solar installation, the farmer on Rocky Hill Road. Well, they have stone little, stone metal, it was stone anyway, stone soup farm. Small house, no, no functional expansion capacity for the existing structure because of where it lies related, relative to the property line. They wanted to put a detached accessory apartment, kind of like putting up a detached garage across the driveway for their parents. Or for anybody, for that matter, but.
Would it need a new septic system?
Yes.
Well, it's not past Title V, that's all.
So, that.
Same thing with the septic.
There is interest. You remember back at the beginning of the, in fact, detached garage, someone came in the year we adopted the accessory apartment and wanted to, to convert a detached garage into an accessory apartment.
I don't, I mean, you're, you're giving some anecdotal information, but we had our master plan, there was not a ground swell of popular opinion in the questionnaire about having new, more, more apartments. Certainly, it's for open space preservation, so we're coming up with something that really was not on the master plan, just because we think that out of the.
What's the advantage of using, well, having a detached apartment?
Of what?
What's have, what's the advantage to the town of allowing detached apartments?
For instance, take the existing garage that's not attached.
Okay.
People are looking for extra income to live in this town. Where, where does someone over sixty years old that doesn't have a job can get extra funded so they could live the rest of their life in this town? Or their kids, their grandkids could come in, all right? Some people are fortunate, they got plenty of money, you don't have to worry about it.
So having a detached accessory apartment where there is currently a detached garage or nothing would enhance the tax rate?
Exactly.
There would be, there would be value to putting up them. I, I suspect we're going to see it more in conversion. I, I doubt anyone is going to find it worthwhile, cost effective, to build a nine-hundred-square-foot building.
Oh, I don't, I disagree with that.
But I.
I think somebody could bring in a trailer, take the wheels off.
We're not talking, what the hell are you talking about trailers? We're not talking about trailers.
You, you, you're talking.
Is it constructed on, new construction or reconstructed on a foundation, not a trailer? Why the hell are you bringing up trailers?
Because you can get a crock, you can run that bylaw by bringing the trailer, take the wheels off, and put it on.
No, no, we're not talking about trailers.
That is allowed.
A constructed.
Legally, that is allowed, and it's not called a trailer, it's called a prefabricated house. So when you take the wheels off, that's what it is. And so it's allowed in, well, I'm working.
I don't think it meets the same state spec.
I think, I think you just can't say we wanna do this. What you wanna say is, how, how, do you, do you build new? Does it have to be an existing facility? How big can it be?
You're doing the same thing with us?
And how big should the lot be?
Right now, Joe, you're doing the same thing with an accessory apartment. What the hell is the difference if it's attached or detached? It still meets Title V inspection. If they're smaller, there's no question. And it's still, it has to pass Title V. If you're gonna make an improvement to your septic system for an extra bedroom or two-bedroom, then so be it, and it can be done on it. That's done with an engineer and plans for that. I can't understand what's so, what's the sticking point of attached and detached?
I think it needs to be investigated to see what Joe said about taking a trailer and calling it a prefabricated home.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna see that.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, but their, but that could be spelled out.
If, if, that, that could be spelled out by not allowing new construction, that could be addressed with that, but that would defeat a little bit of the purpose. But they're. I, I don't have a strong, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. But I'm kinda open on this one to see reason for why we should allow.
So you're saying you could have prefabricated for the first housing on the lot, but not the second, second house? Because there's many houses in Hadley that would.
You cannot say that legally.
No, I don't think so.
No. But you can, you can, you need to define somehow.
Well, then what's the difference with accessories? They come with a prefab and attach it to the house.
Well, Johnny, this, this, as you remember during the, during the town meeting, when we were talking about accessory apartments, it was very controversial. It passed by one vote. And, and the only reason it became kind of doable in a past town meeting, I think you were on that committee, or was it Jim?
Me.
You were, I mean, you guys worked a lot. You brought a committee together of a lot of people, pros and cons, and you, you came up with something that you thought could pass the town meeting.
If it doesn't pass, you still got an accessory apartment. You still got that intact.
That's correct. Why do we need, why do we need more? Do we need more students, offers?
I'm not talking about we need more. I'm not talking about we need more. It's the same thing, but it's not attached. It gives the, the landowner or homeowner more options on their property.
Well, you know, the neighbors may not like, uh...
Well, let them complain.
That's only a public hearing.
It might. There's no neighbors that, that are complaining about what we do now with the accessory apartment.
Usually, usually it's too late after you've passed the town meeting, you know? You don't want root nine to be business. People complain about it all the time, but once it passed the town...
I'm worried about elderly people being, uh, able to keep on with the taxes rising and everything and they have no new place to get income. There's opportunity that if they have an existing place, they can convert it into a, to a housing unit. They could downsize, kids could live in it in their house or whatever.
Apparently tenants' rights are some of the strictest in the country in Massachusetts. I'm not sure an elderly person wants to get involved in becoming a landlord.
Well, the problem is most of the accessory apartments we're seeing are not elderly people.
Exactly.
Most of, most of the accessory apartment people, applications we've seen, very few have been to elderly couples.
Yeah, but they, but they, they have been cases that if their kids move in and live with the parents in an accessory apartment.
Most of them...
Or they, or they'll switch.
Most of the accessory apartments that have come into us have been, I would say, people in far less than senior citizens just looking for extra money on their house.
Oh. And I, you can guarantee that there's gonna be some developers who are gonna come in and they're gonna put some on every house they own. Like, I don't wanna mention any names, this person that has a lot of rental units in the town of Hadley. He'll just be, put some more right in a row.
We just, we need, we need to look at this carefully.
Not a part of the units has to be under occupied.
We need to look at this carefully and...
But you have that, that's right, the owner occupied.
We need, we need, we need to look at this a little bit carefully and especially about...
Did the grandparents pass away?
Especially the prefabricated housing that we're... The prefabricated...
You can't stop it 'cause right now they can come in with a prefab to put it on a accessory, attach it right to the house. What are you talking about?
Well, a, a true prefabricated home is one thing.
As long as it meets the code, you can't stop it.
That's right. A true prefabricated home is not a problem. A trailer, if you take the two wheels off of it and call it a prefabricated home, is a different item. And we need to review that with the building inspector to see, to see what that, to see what that has determined.
Right.
So, I'll, I'll give an example. Um, we have a couple of detached farms on our property. And I am in no way looking to convert them to accessory apartments, we have enough space, but, um, underutilized, structurally sound, detached building. Uh, I'm not gonna use it for farming again, no one, it's not suitable for farming, but could be converted into a very nice accessory apartment. Um, Mike, it, uh, has a nicely rebuilt barn behind...
Right.
Well, it's not owner occupied, so that wouldn't qualify, but, um, you had a barn burned down, you built a new one there. Um, you're not actively farming as much. Um, you know, that's the kind of building that could be usefully converted to, uh, to housing. And in locations where, you know, no one's gonna complain. So that's, that's one of the functions of the fact that we have eighty percent of the town in the agricultural residential zoning district, regardless of whether the houses are two hundred feet apart or two thousand feet apart. Um, so I'm, I'm, I like the idea of, I don't like to rule out detached. We've, we did not support accessory apartments when it was first brought up. Uh, but with one exception that was withdrawn, uh, I don't think, I've not heard any complaints about any of them.
How many have you gave permits for accessory premises since this bylaw went into existence?
I was gonna say twenty to thirty.
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty? In that range, in that range.
How many complaints did you have that's any...
Of the ones we approved, none.
Will the accessory apartment be able to be owned by someone besides the people living?
No, builders, owners, owner occupiers.
Or occupy on the property.
Well, yeah, like, like Jimmy said, you gotta think in the future, Hadley's population is growing. From what I've heard, people want cluster housing. It's not, hasn't passed yet. This allows the form of cluster housing, but it's more diffuse.
But this is an exception to the one dwelling per lot rule.
Right.
And...
Yeah.
So, no, it wouldn't be separately, it wouldn't be separately sellable.
Yeah.
No, because people don't want cluster housing, developers want cluster housing. That's they can make a lot more money and throw the burden on the town.
What's, what's the population right now in Hadley? Forty eight?
Four, five thousand.
Fifty-two hundred.
Where's it gonna be in twenty years? Where's it gonna be in twenty years?
If you tell me what's gonna happen to the university...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be ten thousand?
The population of Hadley in twenty years depends a lot on this board right here.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to... You're gonna have to sell many new houses in the Wild West, okay?
Well, it's a good place for houses because you can't farm there.
Well, you look at people taking up land, you know, there's, there's a problem with housing in Hadley because of the five colleges. They take up every single unit they can get their hands on. All right? Do you want housing to take up the rest of the land that's in Hadley that's not in the APR? Because that's, and I'll tell you, you watch what's, what's going on, what I hear, the select board are in favor of a split tax rate. When, when everything hits the fan, the farmers that have land that's not in their APR and they're, they're, according to DOR, a business, they're gonna be looking to sell that land.
Well, but wait a minute, but leave, leave the tax rate alone. We're not talking about that right now.
I know that.
Let's talk about...
But it all, all affects the housing.
We're strictly talking about the, there is an item on the topic of a split tax rate, so leave that alone.
Is it possible to do a poll of Hadley residents and just asking the question?
You'll do a thing at the town meeting?
Town meeting, you're trying to, you're trying to at a town meeting.
They want it, they go for it. They go, they go against it. Doesn't.
So, yeah. So we need to find a little more information on, on, on the detached. What qualifies for detached? You know? I'll talk to Tim. All right. Enough on that. Um, split tax rate, that's coming up to the board of select, so I think we should at least, I, I think we should take a stand on it because it's a form. I mentioned this before, a split tax rate, a tax, tax, at a, at a, at a meeting, I said it once before, I believe, two years ago, um, I am absolutely against a split tax rate. All a split tax rate does is artificially deflate the tax rate for a homeowner temporarily.
Yeah.
If you deflate the tax rate for the homeowner and inflate it for the business, you now made the businesses a lot less attractive to come into Hadley. A lower tax rate on residential is going to stay low for a few years, which are gonna bring drop the taxes so much it's now going to be extremely attractive to build residences in Hadley. You're, you probably would see an influx of subdivisions over several years to the point that in, I don't know, I'm just throwing them around there, in ten years, you'll be looking to expand a lot of services, schools, police, fire, and you're gonna be right back where you are now and probably far less shake because you're gonna, the farmers are gonna be paying a higher tax rate, to John's point, and they're gonna have to sell the property to be able to afford to farm or just get out of farming and those that can, can sell are gonna skedaddle and saw, gonna be houses. And you're gonna be in deep, deep doo-doo. It, it is absolutely the worst thing you could do. Hold on, hold on, they got a split tax rate.
Springfield.
Or does it?
Who, who, who else?
Springfield.
Springfield? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But, but, no, no, Springfield, that's it.
I think it was Springfield, isn't it? One of them.
We shouldn't have that.
And, uh, Greenfield just voted it.
They did?
The, uh, the mayor vetoed it and I guess they're supposed to be overriding his veto.
Okay.
They gotta pay the votes to do it on the council. I, I think this is one, we need more information. I've heard that they're gonna, there are farmers exemptions, there are exemptions for small business, there are exemptions. So basically, they wanna tuck it to the, the big box stores.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just say...
Well, not necessarily the big box stores.
Any, any business, any business. You take the big box store, you gotta tuck it to them. What's gonna happen? You know damn well they're gonna sue because they're gonna say, "Look, Amazon is taking all our business, it's not worth what it was. We're gonna demand a lower assessment." So you're gonna be in there, up in legal fees that...
Joe, we already have done that with the assessors and it went to the appellate court and the appellate court sided with the petitioners.
Of course.
So, that's been done already.
Well, no, they're gonna do it again.
Well, let them do it, they'll see what's gonna happen.
Well, and they may be justified now. With the towns, with the... I think before we, if we, before we take a final formal vote, we should find out the facts. What's gonna be exempted, what isn't gonna be exempted? I mean, right now, we're, we're kinda guessing.
I think as a matter of principle, we should be against the...
The...
We don't want, we don't want exemption as a matter of principle.
Even, even if the farmers are exempt, the fact is you're going to artificially deflate the tax rate for residents to make it extremely attractive for residences to build and move into Hadley and over a...
I, I, I'm, I'm kinda with you.
Just for that one, what you just said, that one thing, if it just affected that one thing, do you want that?
Yeah. You're gonna see more residences, you're gonna see more, more businesses.
All right, then that's why we should stand to say, "We want a single tax rate."
Yeah. Because you're gonna see more residences, even if the farmers are exempt, let's just lay out. Businesses are not gonna be as attractive to move in. Um, residents are gonna be, are going to be attractive to move in. You're gonna, you could see over some very reasonable short time, more subdivisions because it's gonna be so inexpensive to, to, to pay your taxes in town and your schools are gonna be burdened, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just, it's just not a good deal.
It'll be, become a high demand for housing in Hadley.
Yep.
High demand.
You're gonna see the fuel, you're gonna see the few subdivisions that have building lots that they will right now suck up probably pretty quick. And a lot more on down the road. But there's a lot of land available that can be built into subdivisions.
I know.
You got, I think there's twenty-four thousand acres in Hadley. You've only got about five thousand preserved, right, in APR? It's that. Right? Is it that much?
I don't know.
I don't think it's that much, but let's say there's five thousand. Let's say there's ten thousand developments. It was just, the, the, the planning, the planning commission did a study...
Development Constraints Plan.
We have it. Yeah. That Hadley could see, if it was, Hadley was built out, you could see a population of around twenty thousand in Hadley, twenty-five thousand. Right now, considering we're at five thousand, whoa.
Look what, look what happened in Belchito with housing. Look what happened.
Oh, yeah. They built, they built two high schools in the last three years.
It went, it went absolutely crazy over there.
That's because they did not, they're the only community around that not to have a cap on housing developments per year. We had a cap. We'd probably have to put the cap back on, but nevertheless...
You wouldn't be able to put a cap on, we already, we already know that's unconstitutional.
Just in principle, I really believe there's not a person sitting on this board that would support a split tax rate. No one would be, no.
Okay. So, the hearing is tomorrow night. Uh, you wanna, you wanna get a letter, email to the, uh, select board?
So, we're, we're gonna have a vote?
I would take, I would, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that there is time pressure here.
Yeah.
And what we, before we take a vote, you know, we don't, we don't really have time to have a committee develop a letter.
Right.
So I just wanna, before we take a vote, I wanna know how we, how we see getting from the vote to...
An email to the board of select, I think is most appropriate.
And the daily act is that.
They'll read tomorrow's paper. Or tomorrow morning's paper.
Yeah.
Will we wrap the bill or do we...
Um, yeah, I could, I can, I can run something, basically, I think you had it all here, that artificially deflates, artificially inflates, makes residential development more likely, increasing pressure.
So therefore, as a matter of economic principle, we're against it.
No, we aren't taking economic principle, we're talking the interests of the town of Hadley, right?
Yes.
He's talking artificially increasing demand, that's, that's economics.
So, we just need to have a reason that is in our wheelhouse, as they say.
Yes.
Just because we like it or don't like it individually is not a good reason to take a position on the board.
I certainly, I certainly support business, that business made this town really affordable and what this could do to the future of this town. For its population, for the businesses disappearing, coming in for rebates for taxes, which they have done once the buildings go idle.
Okay, well, so that's, there, there has been little or no study, as far as I'm aware, of potential adverse impact on business. So...
Well, everybody knows what's going on with amazon.com and, and everything on the internet.
Okay, so you're gonna make...
Everywhere.
Wanna make a motion, John?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that this board strongly opposes a split tax rate in the town of Hadley for these various reasons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed, motion passes unanimously. You'll put that, the thing together, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will, uh, I will email something to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Just so, another set of eyes. I'll, I'll send it around to everybody, but I won't worry about getting a response from everybody. I will just send it...
For information.
For information, but, um, if, uh, I, I wanna be sure, I'm, I'm working off of basically Jim's statement, so I wanna be sure.
It's fine.
Okay.
It's fine.
Do you have information? Right now, there's a finance committee meeting, I'm sorry, not finance, department head meeting at six o'clock, yeah, at six o'clock, on December sixth at eleven AM at a town hall, room two oh three, usual monthly department head meeting. And we've got a request, since it's not on the agenda, I don't wanna discuss it, but a bill to put it on for our next meeting um, to discuss, uh, two fiscal year two thousand nineteen budgets. Here's a copy for everybody to look at what our budget is and they come back at our next meeting so that we can talk about it and what we'd like to see. Not that we'll get it, but at least we can talk about it.
This is for the next meeting?
Yes.
I also wanna put on, um, just for discussion, um, there is an all boards meeting that is being scheduled for January.
Okay.
And...
That's the one they canceled for the one in December?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, both Molly Keegan and, uh, David Nixon have indicated that they would like planning board to have a little, say a few extra words about the master plan.
Okay, no problem.
So, we can, uh, I, I'll just put that up in the next agenda too.
Does this talk about the budget? Is that primarily what it's for?
The master plan?
No.
The, the all boards meeting? Well, it, it's a little unclear. I think they're going to get out a, um, I'm not sure if it's talking about the budget or talking about generic department needs. Uh, I believe that they are going to get out some sort of, uh, agenda or guide, guidelines on what we are gonna be talking about, otherwise it'll just turn into a free for all.
You're absolutely right, that was what, that's what...
Just all those meetings are, right?
I think we should, we're, we're gonna wanna contact someone about getting heat here during the winter?
No, I wanna find out where we're gonna go when they demolish the building, never mind the heat.
I, I'll put that letter out today to the select...
Good job.
Well, see, the window's going on last night.
Also, you write it there, is it gonna be a heated building? And air conditioning?
I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Maybe we can in our budget put in for snowmobiles.
Wolf weaver.
Yeah.
All the same colored with plainboard.
John, John needs one too.
Right, and one for the...
One for the TV light.
Right. Snowmobiles.
Wolf weaver.
Second.
All in favor?
With matching gloves.
Thank you, John.
Don't forget matching gloves with that suit. I'm in words.